... liberty and justice for all.
Would the city clerk please take role?
Davis Reinhardt?
Here.
Can you hear that? Davis Reinhardt? Bud Starker?
Here.
Joyce Jay?
Mike Stites?
George Pond?
Present.
Joseph Demott? Tracy Langworthy?
Here.
Kristy Davis?
Here.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of July 9, 2012?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion for approval. It was seconded by Councilmember Starker. Discussion on the minutes? Please poll the council.
I pushed the yellow thing and it beeped at me. There.
Motion carries seven zero with Ms. Davis abstaining.
Only shaver on that. The motion was by Mr. Stites and seconded by Mr. Starker because Mr. Stites doesn't have his, he has his mic on.
Okay.
Same time, okay. I couldn't, I couldn't hear, see.
Mr. Starker can have the second if he would like.
Okay.
Before we move forward with the council meeting, I would like to ask for a moment of silence for the Wheat Ridge shooting victims and their families. I would also like to ask for a moment of silence for the first responders to the theater and their professional work. Thank you. So on a more positive note, we have some folks here tonight from SIRSAA. Could you please step forward? Just, um, please introduce yourselves. Come on up.
Courtney Grams, I'm the membership services rep.
And Bob Pomeroy, I'm the loss control rep that services the municipality.
Thank you. Do we have some staff here to accept the award tonight? Was Patrick, was... Patrick and Heather, you want to come on up and accept the award? Has he the awards? SIRSAA is our insurance that we work with and Bob wanted to award this loss prevention award for property casualty pool. So why did you want to say a few words?
I've been working with the municipality for a little over 14 years now and I think this is the second award you guys have won in the last, I think, four years with the Safety Champion Award. But the loss prevention award is for the PC pool and it's for scoring high on the loss control audit and having, which you guys scored 102 in 2011, and then having a low loss ratio in the property casualty pool, which you were at 9 percent. So congratulations and... Members, I guess, of the safety committee here also.
Sure, I'll have Patrick go ahead and announce.
Thank you, Bob. We appreciate you coming out tonight and to present this to us. I'm very proud of our, our safety committee. We've spent a lot of time and effort in, in making sure our employees are safe and preventing losses to the city and saving us money. And the activities that the safety committee participates in actually saves us. We get premiums back from SIRSAA, which reduces our, our annual premiums for our insurance. So I'd like to thank the group as a whole and tonight we have with us Patty Humphrey. You guys want to come on up? Barb Clubberdance? Jason Bray? Ruth Johnson? Karen Crew? You're not coming up, Karen? You're on here. Karen's our HR manager, though. And these are just a few members of our, our safety committee and departments each have a representative on the committee and they do rotate throughout, throughout the years. So, thank you very much.
And then I, tonight we also wanted to recognize a local Wheat Ridge resident. So could Jim Stevens please step forward and Megan? Jim is a Wheat Ridge resident.
I met him the other day at the block party. Yeah, over on 33 Reed, 32nd and Reed. He's a scrimshaw.
Tonight, congratulations are in order for Wheat Ridge resident Jim Stevens, who has won a special recognition award at the National Judging for Veterans Creative Arts Festival. The judging is a year-long process when an artist must win at various levels to be selected. There were approximately 1,900 artist entries and his winning piece called Bifra?
Beaufra.
Beaufra is on display at the National VA Art Show in Boston, Massachusetts. And we wanted to give Jim an award. It says, "Congratulations, Wheat Ridge resident and artist Jim Stevens for winning a special recognition award at the Veterans Creative Arts Festival." His recognition is given to Jim Stevens and congratulations.
I want to thank you, Mayor Duttulio, and the council, as well as the city staff and the uniform personnel for making Wheat Ridge such a great place to live. I'm honored and humbled by the recognition that you're giving my artwork here today. I really appreciate it. You know, in the shadow of the tragedy of last Friday, we should all be reminded that without empathy for others, terrible and horrible things can happen. My daughter Megan is holding a print of the original drawing, which is in Washington right now. It'll be on display at the National VA Art Show, October the 12th in Boston, at the National State House there. I drew this image from a real event that occurred in a nation torn by civil war. I, I drew it to touch the human heart. My hope is that my work will be seen by many people and that it'll remind everyone of the compassion and empathy that we all need to possess for one another so that we can avoid such tragic scenes, not just in war, but in our communities as well. We need to feel and care for one another. We need empathy in our hearts. My artwork reminds us of what can happen without it. I want to thank you again.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is citizens' right to speak. Citizens who wish may speak on any matter not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes. Please step forward to the podium and please spell your last name for the record. This is general public comment on any item not on the agenda for the regular meeting. So please step forward, form a line against the wall, and please spell your last name for the record and state your city or your address. Mr. Keller, I guess you're first.
I'm, I'm making an assumption that an item on the study session and not on the agenda is off the agenda, Senator.
Is, what's that?
I'm, I'm speaking to an item on the study session.
That's okay because it isn't on this agenda.
Okay, thanks very much. Okay. And again, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and City Council, for the opportunity to speak about the proposed revision to the city noise ordinance.
Mr. Keller, could you spell your last name for the record? Sorry.
Oh, yes, sorry. Steve Keller, 4325 Iris Street, Wheat Ridge.
Thank you.
And we've spoken to this a couple of times before and this afternoon several of us had the opportunity to take a look at the latest revision, which will be discussed in the study session this evening. And we have a few particular comments. We would like, please, and we suggest that in the definitions, the length of an amplified sound event be specified. For example, an event would occupy, would take place on a single day, possibly. Under the sec, under Section 1C and Items 1 and 2, under amplified sound event, we suggest that there be a method by which the public can find out about an application for a permit. We're not saying that the public be involved in the process, but we'd like the opportunity to know that a permit's been applied for and that the business be afforded a mechanism to notify the neighbors. And that's something that's come up at study sessions before, I think. Under Section 1, subsection C, Item 3, there's a blank for the time range for an event. And we're suggesting four hours for the length of an amplified sound event. Same subject, same subsection, Item 4, there's a blank for the number of events, number of permitted events that would be allowed for a particular business or location. And we feel very strongly that it should be no more than two. We think that if it's more than two, it, it, as we discussed before, it stops being a, a special event and becomes part of the business model. And last, under enforcement, we're very glad to see the enforcement section pulled out of the amplified sound event subsection and now made more general, such that the enforcement applies to all the, apparently, applies to all the categories of unreasonable noise. That's the extent of our comments and we'll put these in an email to Mayor and the council within the next couple of days. Thanks very much.
Thank you. So I take it you want six minutes because you have two of you? Okay. Please spell your last name for the record and state your address or your city.
Margie Cypher, Wheat Ridge Carnation Festival, 3405 Ward Road. Wheat Ridge, Colorado, 80033.
Please spell your last name for the record and Gina.
Cypher. S is in Sam, E Y, F is in Frank, E R.
Gina Hallisey on behalf of Nino Zope, Z O P P E, I'm just kidding, H A L L I S E Y. And we come bearing gifts, so we wanted to break away from the serious, this is serious business. We want to have a little fun. So I brought some gifts for council and I have three things I wanted to talk to you tonight to bring you up to date on circus happenings. And one of them is, we heard there was a parade coming to town and we were hopeful that maybe you would want to wear Zope t-shirts and hats at your parade and maybe possibly get in the spirit of the circus and also pass out circus bucks to all the attendees at the parade because that might be a great idea to give somebody $5 off to attend the circus that weekend or the following weekend. So I have circus bucks and we'll make sure that we get all of these to you and Margie will talk a little bit more about that. And then I have hats and then I have t-shirts. So I will try to get them out in order and you guys can pick and choose. Also, I have one last request. As you know, things are really clicking along with the circus. Things are going great. We are trying, we're down to the last few things and I'd like to come and maybe present to, to you in one of your meetings or study session in the next couple of weeks to give you a full update. But I am in, trying to find volunteers. So I would love to enlist either city employees or community members or just put a plea out there to anyone in Wheat Ridge who would like to participate. We have a schedule for volunteers. They're three-hour blocks of time. It's a wonderful experience to, to be involved and just help out so that we can save some costs on labor.
Do you want to maybe give a website or a phone number they can call you for volunteers?
Sure. They can call me directly at 303-726-6111 or email me at Gina@GetConnectedEvents.com, G-I-N-A@GetConnectedEvents.com. And I have a little spreadsheet that I'm going to leave as part of the paperwork. So you can pass that along. Margie? I know I took more than three minutes. You have two.
I'm talking mostly about the festival. We have a great opportunity for a youth group, possibly boy scouts, girl scouts, who would like to have a, a community service project. And that would be with vendor move-in Friday morning. They don't need to even show up at the midway until around 10:30 in the morning. And that will be helping all of our vendors unload. Vendors just have 15 minutes to pull their cars onto the midway. They, they arrive in a, at a designated time and these kids would just be providing great customer service, helping them unload and then getting their car off the midway so the next group of vendors can come in. By the way, we are five booths away from selling out this year's festival. It's very exciting. And then those, by the way, that youth group, whoever, and we'll take anyone in the room, that you do get a free, they get a free festival volunteer t-shirt, bright yellow. And then our next need is for our shuttle buses. Jeffco Public Schools has been wonderful in supplying us with shuttle buses. We're going to be running them from three parking lots, Everett Middle School, Wheat Ridge, uh, five, excuse me, yeah, five through eight, and then Wheat Ridge High School. It's just a great thing. However, we need six volunteers per two-hour shift to pull this off. So I'm going to give you a little information and then the website. This could be, by the way, what we're looking for, who's, who's, this is who we're looking for. Maybe a father and a son who would collect a dollar from each person boarding the bus. It's a dollar round trip. Babies two and under who can sit on a lap are free. And so we will start, these buses will start running at 4 o'clock on Friday afternoon. I may have that wrong. Anyway, our shifts are from 5:30 to 7:30 on Friday and 7:30 to 9:30 on the same evening. We're not going to be running any more buses after that that we're going to be collecting money for because we assume everybody's going to be in the park for the fireworks. Hopefully, they will be approved for the fireworks and the live entertainment. On Saturday, the shifts start at 1:30. They go every two hours up until 9:30 and then we'll be finished with that. However, the buses themselves will run until 11:30 because we have so many people at the festival when it closes at 11:00. We would love city employees to volunteer for these different shifts, anyone on council. We have someone in the audience who's supplying himself and two of his children to be in one of those shifts and you will get a festival t-shirt. So this is all very exciting. And I just want to say again to city council, to the city, especially to Joyce Manwaring, it's been a fantastic cooperative effort. We appreciate all that you have done to make this, this event go so smoothly. Thank you. Oh, website. The, the festival, the festival volunteers for the parking lots and for the vendor unload is on our website at www.TheCarnationFestival.com. Thank you.
She's giving away t-shirts, but I'm giving away Nino dolls, which are much cuter. I think he should stay here for the rest of them, maybe.
You might want to move that.
I know.
I'm, I'm sure we'll get censured on that now. No, I'm just kidding.
But everything, I left everything right up here. So, thank you again and hopefully some of you will volunteer or no volunteers can hook me up with volunteers. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else here for public comments on any item that's not on the regular business meeting agenda? Seeing that, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. I don't believe there are any changes tonight. And we'll move on to the consent agenda. I know that Item 1D wanted to be polled. Mr. Demott, Item 1, consent agenda?
Chief Mr. Mayor, consent agenda. Item 1A, Resolution 39, 2012, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between Jefferson County, the city of Arvada, the city of Lakewood, the city of Wheat Ridge, the city of Golden, the city of Westminster, and the city of Edgewater, animal shelter, dog licensing, funding. Item 1B, motion to award ITB 1223 to Frontier Mechanical Incorporated, Inglewood, Colorado, in the amount of $106,500 for the computer room, air conditioning units, and installation project and allowing contingency amount of $10,650. Item 1C, motion to award RFB 1227, tandem equipment outfit to Laton Truck Equipment Company of Colorado Springs, Colorado, at a total cost of $78,425. Item 1D, motion to award the RFQJN 1224 Kipling Trail Design Contract to Bohannon Houston, Inglewood, Colorado, in the contract amount of $197,533.2 and to approve contingency amount of $40,000.
Motion's in order on A, B, and C, I believe.
Have we pulled 1D? I move to approve Items 1A, 1B, and 1C.
Is there a second?
Second.
They have motion to approve Items 1, A, B, and C. It was seconded by Mr. Reinhardt. Discussion on those three? Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thanks. Mr. Demott, Mr. Reinhardt, do you pull the Item 1D?
I had some concerns about Item 1D. You know, I, maybe it's just me. I didn't, I'd read through the packet and seen that we had spoken about this, but I guess I didn't realize the extent of what we were talking about. What we're voting on tonight, the consulting fee of approximately $200,000. I don't think I was quite aware of the extent of what we were, what we were looking at. A $3.4 million project for multi-use bike trail that costing the city $700,000 would be our share. But I feel that possibly we'd be putting ourselves in a, and maybe I'm getting ahead of myself, but putting ourselves in a position where we're going to be looking at acquiring and possibly, you know, forcing some acquisition of some residential properties. And I just feel that I really don't want to get into that situation. I'd like to possibly ask that if anybody would like to maybe bring that back to a study session because I don't, I don't know that I'm, you know, if I'm, if I'm right or if I'm comfortable with what we're talking about, but I'd like to kind of hear what Mr. Reinhardt has to say about it also.
I'm, I'm not confident. I, I also understood this was coming forward in this format at this time. And I guess before I, I'm all but prepared to move to bring it back to study session, but I would like to at least understand what the consequence of the delay would be if we chose to delay it from someone on the staff.
Tim Perano, Director of Public Works, be happy to answer that question. About a year, a little less than a year ago, you entered into an intergovernmental agreement with CDOT to build this project. And it was phased over two years with the design work and easement acquisitions occurring this year. Next year, we would actually be building the, the trail. The trail is similar to what was constructed adjacent to Kipling at the new park from 35th to 38th. It's anticipated that there will be four or five easements that will need to be acquired from a few of the residents in order to squeeze this in. Most places where it's tight will be attached to the back of curb. The city's portion of the cost includes soft match because the city is taking the responsibility to design it. There are certain aspects of the design that we do not have capability for and that's the structural design of the bridge over Clear Creek. We'll be designing a new footbridge over Clear Creek for the trail. And then we have to extend a couple of box culverts over Lena Gulch and also over one of Rocky Mountain Ditch. So that's what you're, you're actually approving tonight is the engineering assistance in that part of the design. Be happy to answer any other questions you might have. If you were to delay this for a significant length of time, it could put the project in jeopardy because we do have to get it under design, under design so we can get it built next, next year in accordance with the intergovernmental agreement with CDOT.
Mr. Starker and then Ms. Jay? Or Mr. Reinhardt, you done?
No, I'd actually like to hear some others before I...
But you're done with your questions?
That was the question. Does it, how does it, I'm not sure. I guess a significant length of time is a fairly ambiguous phrase. I mean, it seems a good couple of weeks to bring it back and fully understand. It doesn't strike me as the kind of thing that kills a deal like this.
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Starker?
Mr. Perano, is this, uh, this is a professional services contract agreement, so we'll be paying on the time and expense based upon the rates that are, that are established in here?
Yes.
And is this a not-to-exceed or?
It's a not-to-exceed. We have, we have maximums. We have a not-to-exceed. I didn't provide because typically council doesn't want to spend the time looking at those, but I have that information, the actual rates and the scope of work if anyone was interested in looking at that. But as I mentioned earlier, that is the scope of work for, for these folks.
Thank you.
Ms. Jay?
On the right-of-way, do the property owners have any anticipation of how much right-of-way will be asked?
We don't know yet. Once, that's part of what we'll be doing is we're going to finish our survey and then this contract provides assistance in negotiating those takings. We have to use the federal process.
It's pretty extensive, the amount of work that they do in the contract.
Right, but it's, it's really not significant as far as the amount of take that we have. But we do have to prepare a right-of-way plan, which shows specifically how much easement we need from various property owners along Kipling. And that was always anticipated that there would be some easements required along, along Kipling in order to build this. We're talking about a 10-foot trail.
Right, how big could it be?
And we own or the state owns seven or eight feet. So typically, we're talking about a four or five-foot easement is all that we're going to be acquiring from any one property.
Now, I noticed that the, the design team, the, the engineering team, excuse me, will be negotiating some of those right-of-ways.
We're going to ask them to negotiate all of them because we need to have it done in accordance with the federal law and process. That's part of why we hired these folks is so that we would comply with the federal law. This is a federal grant project.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I guess I had one question, Tim. If council decides not to fund this, not to move forward with the IGA, is there a penalty that the city has, that the city incurs for not moving forward?
I don't believe there's a penalty if you wanted to forego the project entirely. You, I mean, you're, you're putting the $2.5 million of grant funds at risk and that's, that's basically what's, what's at risk at this point. But I guess I had, I'd have to look at the IGA and see what penalty there might be. I have, I'd have to research that for you.
So we need a motion?
Oh, Mr. Park? Well, I just want to make a comment. I mean, I certainly would not want to jump to that conclusion that what we're talking about is, is trying to, to stop the, you know, the thought of this trail, which I think is an important amenity, obviously, if there's money on the table. I, I would support, you know, bringing this to study session and talking about it more as long as we, we are being timely about that and, and making sure that we're not jeopardizing the, the schedule.
We need a motion for this?
I'd, I'd like to move that this be brought forward at the next available study session so council can fully understand the financial implications of the decision they made.
Is there a second?
Second.
Can we have a motion to move RFQJN 1224, the Kipling Trail Design Contract to the most, the next available study session? That was by Mr. Reinhardt, seconded by Mr. Demott. Any timeframe you want as soon as possible?
Yeah.
So please poll the council on the postponement.
Motion carries seven to one with Mr. Stites voting no.
Thank you. So I'm going to move on to public input for the 2013 budget. If you're here to speak on the budget... If you're here to speak on the budget, please step forward to the podium, please spell your last name for the record, and state your city or your address. Please form a line along the wall, and feel free to make your comments on the 2013 budget,
Good evening. Kim Calomino, C-A-L-O-M-I-N-O, 4070 Dover Street, Wheat Ridge. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Thanks for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I want to thank you for the investment, the exciting investment in economic development, economic development, as we see taking place on 38th Avenue. I, I travel, as probably most of you do, travel 38th Avenue quite often as a resident, and it's really exciting to see the pop-up patios, the planters, the increased activity along the street, people walking, biking, yoga in the park, all of the folks enjoying pizza on the patio at Right Coast Pizza, and good stuff happening out there. And Right Coast Pizza, as you know, is a beneficiary of the Building Up Business Loan Program, a program supported by city council, and it's been, it's great pizza. If you haven't been there, please check it out. And it's great to see that, that restaurant packed, and the kind of activity that we see increasing along there. And, and it's just a start. The Leadership Committee that Wheat Ridge 2020 has worked with, with your support, is, is a great beginning, but there's a lot left to do. So regarding the 2013 budget, I'm here to encourage you to continue to support the leadership and the development along 38th Avenue and funding for Wheat Ridge 2020, keep up the good work. There's so much happening in the city. It's just all over the place, but especially 38th Avenue is really great. So thank you for your good work.
Thank you. Please spell your last name for the record.
My name is Jesse Hill, H-I-L-L, Levea, 295 Chase Street. Council, I'm here to discuss the budget, and not so much the specifics, but more about the process. Tough to get involved and start without really budget transparency. I don't really find a valid reason at this point in time why we don't have an open register for citizens to view what our tax dollars are being spent on. To do so is a cumbersome and lengthy process of open records requests, and it can really be simple, a weekly printout and a book and ledger that where citizens could go and view. Put the PDFs online, so they're searchable. I mean, I'll buy the paper to print this stuff. And also, when it comes to the transparency, it's some of the bait and switch that kind of happens from what's a, you know, approved budget, say the capital improvement funds, the gateway project, and seeing the $100,000 through this year, get moved around to other pep projects more, rather than the improvements that citizens thought that that, those funds were going to. I guess number two, just the general attitude of the city government would be a Google test, you know? If, if we can Google it and find someone offering the service, the city really shouldn't be in that service, and some of them might seem like small amounts of money, but they do add up over time. I just take the shop Wheat Ridge, little link online, we pay for that. Seriously, there are dozens of, you know, better, well-equipped sites on the internet that allow us to, and people to search, and I just don't find that a value added to the city or resource we're spending money on. Same with, I appreciate the videos that are posted online of council meetings, but we don't really have funds, it seems, for study sessions. It's something too. How about put it on YouTube? They can be searchable, watched on mobile devices, could actually make money through advertising. These are little things that we pay for those services, that I'd like you to kind of look at and direct staff to see where we can save money. But overall, it's a change in attitude and a focus in the council on the core services we're looking at. And last, when it comes to budget, it's sustainability, and, you know, it's the idea that, I guess, our generation here should be, you know, and the folks here should be funding resources and activity of the city amongst ourselves. And I'm a little bit amazed that throughout the years I've watched council, there's almost no thought or debate on accepting any federal funds. We usually refer them to grants when they're more deficit funding, and I guess I'd ask you to say, thanks but no thanks sometimes. It's somewhat morally wrong to have my generation and my children's generation pay for the things that we want now today, if we want them. I think we should step up as Wheat Ridge and fund them ourselves within our own time or lifespan. Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jerry Nealon, N-E-A-L-O-N. My business is at 6770 West 38th Avenue, Crest Kitchen and Bath. I'm the board president of Wheat Ridge 2020, and I'm kind of here on behalf of them. First of all, I just want to thank you again for, Wheat Ridge, I'm assuming, is solvent. You guys do a good job, you make some tough decisions, there's always needs, there's ones, you're, you're held responsible. I think you guys got a tough job. I know it's been tough lately, and I know Wheat Ridge 2020 has kind of been put on the back burner a little bit as far as some funding, and we're still here, we're still going along, and I see a lot of good things happening. We're, you know, 2020 has been a good liaison between the city. We have great city staff, great city council, great mayor, and I think everybody finally, I mean, in my life, everybody's kind of on the same page. Instead of being a veteran community, everybody, I think, wants to move forward, and I do really appreciate that. And I think, you know, 2020 is really key into making all of this happen. Just like Kim was saying on 38th Avenue, there's a lot going on, we got some enthusiasm. It's a good place for volunteers to get together, use some energy free of charge, get some events going on and things like that, and make Wheat Ridge an exciting place to be. So I appreciate you considering Wheat Ridge 2020 when you work on next year's budget. Thank you much.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else to speak on the budget for Item Number 2? Mr. Pahn?
I believe there was a correspondence with the clerk earlier in the day for someone who couldn't be here. Is that appropriate?
Do you have a letter, Ms. Shaver, that you need to read?
From somebody? No, I haven't.
Oh, the clerk could read it for you? I mean, normally the letter would go to the clerk, and then she would read it in the record. Is that okay?
Yeah, absolutely. It said go there.
This letter is from Molly Hansen. Dear Mayor de Tulio and members of Wheat Ridge City Council, thank you for the opportunity to provide public comment on Agenda Number 2, opportunity for public input on the 2013 City of Wheat Ridge budget. Excuse me. As a community initiative working to support healthier communities, Livewell Wheat Ridge is a strong supporter of making communities safe for pedestrians and bicyclists. The Wheat Ridge Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan, adopted in the fall of 2009, provides a blueprint of how we can build our roadways to support a network of connected sidewalks and bicycle facilities, and to create more multimodal connections to support safe, healthy, and vibrant neighborhoods. Partners across Wheat Ridge are united in their desire to grow our economic sector, support neighborhoods, create connections from our business districts to our adjourning neighborhoods, and to support our older adults to age in place. Livewell Wheat Ridge believes supporting the gradual build-out of our bicycle and pedestrian master plan will help accomplish much of this. Building on the exciting work the City of Wheat Ridge accomplished in, between 2009 and 2011, to implement a variety of capital improvements to our roadways, parks, trails, and recreation system to support healthier environments, I ask council to continue this important work. Cognizant of fiscal constraints and competing priorities, Livewell Wheat Ridge knows the build-out of the entire bicycle and pedestrian master plan is a costly undertaking. It is our hope that one or two routes, or partial routes, highlighted in the plan could be considered for build-out in 2013. We feel that this will help us align with priorities called out in the Wheat Ridge Comprehensive Plan envisioned Wheat Ridge, and the 38th Avenue Corridor Plan, and create a more livable, competitive, and vibrant Wheat Ridge. Thank you for your consideration of our comments. Respectfully, Molly Hansen, Livewell Wheat Ridge Coordinator.
Thank you. We'll move on to items on first reading. The next item on the agenda is ordinances on first reading. The purpose of first reading is to set the date and time of the public hearing called the second reading. Amendments by council are allowed on first reading. Public comment is not allowed until second reading. Item Number 3 is Council Bill Number 13-2012. Mr. Stites?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Council Bill Number 13-2012, An Ordnance Adopting by Reference the 2010 Edition of the Model Traffic Code for Colorado, Adopting Amendments There To Repealing All Ordinances in Conflict There Within, Providing Penalties for Model Traffic Code Violations, and Making Conforming Amendments to the Chapter 13 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws. Is a motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Council Bill Number 13-2012, An Ordnance Adopting by Reference the 2010 Edition of the Model Traffic Code for Colorado, Adopting Amendments There To Repealing All Ordinances in Conflict There Within, Providing Penalties for Model Traffic Code Violations, and Making Conforming Amendments to Chapter 13 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws. On first reading, order it published. Public hearing set for Monday, August 13, 2012, at 7:00 PM in the City Hall Council Chambers, and that it takes effect on November 1, 2012.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve Item Number 3, with seconded by Mr. Demott. Discussion on first reading? Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight-zero.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is decisions, resolutions, and motions. Item 4, Mr. Starker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to approve Right Coast Pizza Revocable License Agreement for Use of City-Owned Parking Lot at 7150 West 38th Avenue. At issue in this matter, the owners of Right Coast Pizza, 7100 West 38th Avenue, have requested permission to use the city-owned parking lot adjacent to their business for four special events during August and September of 2012. Section 15.9 of the City Charter allows the city council to grant a permit at any time for the temporary use or occupation of any street, alley, or city-owned place. Right at such permit, shall be revocable by the council at its pleasure, regardless of whether or not such right to revoke is expressly reserved in such permit. Is a motion in order?
Motion's in order.
Then I will move to approve the revocable license agreement with Right Coast Pizza for use of the city-owned parking lot at 7150 West 38th Avenue.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve Item Number 4, with seconded by Ms. Jay. Discussion on Item 4. Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight-zero.
Thank you. That concludes our agenda for this evening. We'll move on to a study session. We'll go to city managers' matters.
Thank you, Mayor. I do not have anything this evening.
Thank you. City attorneys' matters?
I don't either. Thanks. Too good.
City clerks' matters? I can pass as well. Thank you. Ms. Davis?
I just have a couple things, but I wanted to recognize a couple businesses here in Wheat Ridge who are celebrating significant anniversaries, and one of them being Norman Memorials on 44th and Yarrow. They are, have been in business for 100 years, and they're celebrating that anniversary. And then Edwards Meats, and they're on, their address is 12280 West 44th, but it's basically 44th and Ward Road, and they're celebrating their 50th anniversary in business in Wheat Ridge. So I want to just tap my hats off to them and, and thank them, and encourage everyone to, here, I'll be Mike, if find it and buy it in Wheat Ridge.
Hey, 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 plagiarism going on here. Anything else?
No, that's all.
Ms. Langley?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I would just like to sign out my praise. I appreciate the moment of silence. My daughter and I were right across the street from that place, a couple hours before the event took place, and it just kind of, it makes you realize how easily that could have been you, and I am just so appreciative that, that we were safe, and appreciative of all the people who helped each other, and the police officers that kept that from being worse.
Thank you. Ms. Jay? Mr. Pahn?
I just wanted to say that I'm getting excited about the Carnation Festival and all the activities that are about to happen. I'm ready for some spaghetti and some fireworks, if we are allowed, and some circus. The mayor wearing her little red hat, maybe, actually later on tonight. So I'm, I hope everyone shares that excitement, and will come out, certainly get online and look at the resources that are provided to plan your, your events, and we'll see you later this summer.
Thanks. Mr. Starker?
Nothing to add, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Stites?
Oh, yeah. It would be a great time to relocate your home or business to Wheat Ridge. If you need any help, check with us or the staff. On the positive thing, you know, there's parts of this town that's starting to look like crap. Really is, with all the weeds and stuff like that. Please, please, cut those weeds. Help your neighbors cut them, but that's one way to ruin a town real fast, is trash and weeds. And as always, please try to find it and buy it in Wheat Ridge. Thank you, Kristy.
Mr. Reinhardt?
Nothing.
Mr. Demott?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
I also wanted to thank Edwards Meats. I was there this weekend, last weekend, for their celebration. They have a great selection of meats and vegetables, and we bought quite a few things there. I recommend the buffalo ribeye, if you like meat. And if you're a vegetarian, they have Oleth corn. Both of them were good. But I also wanted to, once again, send our condolences out to the families in Aurora. You know, the thing is, people talk about ethics at the elective official level, and I've heard this statement before, that if you don't have ethical and fair-minded citizens, you're not going to have fair-minded and ethical elected officials. And we have to start with the youth, and that's why I enjoy working at Wheat Ridge High School, but, so, talk to your youngsters, and talk to your teenagers, and explain to them what's right and ethical and fair, and, you know, if they want to run for elected office. I was just over at St. Peter and Paul, and they had a little video, they talked about the City of Wheat Ridge, and they talked about, if you run for elected officer, if you're going to be a staff person for the City of Wheat Ridge, what do you have to be? And I said, well, you know, ethic starts at home, and, and fair-mindedness. So I guess if you don't have ethics at home and fair-mindedness at home, you're not going to have it in your elected officials. It's just going to carry on, so. And as far as Mr. Stites goes, I would also agree that areas in town need to mow their weeds, but, you know, if you turn them in, then you get in trouble. So if you turn them in, call code enforcement and go through the process, because no matter what you do, you get, seem to get hammered, so. With that, we're going to adjourn to the study session.